Okay, it's six thirty and I would like to go ahead and bring the meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everybody to the January first meeting of 2020. Welcome, everybody. With that, we call to order and call the roll, please.
Hey, Stephen Bogart.
Here.
Roland Mayhew.
Yep.
Mike Belvecchia.
Here.
Ori Gibbs.
Here.
And Mike.
Here.
Okay, so we have that. And everybody get a chance to review the minutes from the previous meeting.
Yep.
So, any additions, deletions, changes? If none, I'd like to have a motion to accept as written.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have motion, second. Any discussion there being none, all those in favor shall be. Next would be election of officers for the... Seat him. Mike? Would you do us the honor as being a full voting member tonight?
Yes, yes, my honor.
Thank you. So let the record indicate. Now, we'll have the election of officers for the 2020 season.
I'd like to nominate Stephen Bogart as our chair.
Second.
Is there anybody else? There being none, all those in favor of Stephen as the chairperson for 2020.
Right.
Got to vote for yourself.
It's all yours.
We'll get full voting, ladies.
Okay, with that, we'll have to vote for the vice chair. And I'd like to, Ori, nominate Ori.
Yeah, thank you.
Gibbs.
And I'll second that.
We have a second, anybody else? No other names for it, all those in favor of Ori as vice chair, okay? With that being said, we have to nominate a secretary. In the past, we've always had the two combined together and we still have that option available and/or we can appoint a different secretary. Do we have any volunteers who would like to be the secretary?
I think I can...
Then I'll nominate Ori and savor the profits.
And I'll second that.
Anybody else would like to? There being none, all those in favor of Ori for the secretary. Okay, I think that completes all sections of the election for the 2020. And I'd like to welcome all the new board members for the 2020 zoning board of adjustments. Welcome. Okay. Got to have a little humor in life. We accepted minutes from the previous meeting, that's done. Extensions, there are no extensions, there's no continuations. We have one public hearing, okay? So we'll go ahead and start. Before we get started, I would like to put a few ground rules. I know it's just something I like to do up front. We're courteous with each other. As the applicant is talking, we don't interrupt. We ask permission to have comments. There will be a point where you'll be asked to give your comments for those who would like to speak during the public hearing section, okay? And with that also, please turn your cell phones, whatever, to silent so it won't disrupt the meeting, please. With that, I'm going to go ahead and start. We have 2019-0039 variance on 724 White Oaks Road. An applicant is requesting a variance from Article 6, Section 235-34, minimum lot frontage to allow for a boundary line adjustment. Would the applicant please come forward, introduce yourself for the record? If you would transfer yourself, sir, to where the microphone is and you can introduce yourself for the record and tell us how we might help you.
Good afternoon or evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Brian Bailey. I'm a local land surveyor and I'm here representing this application for variance. And as the chair has read into the record, this application essentially is to allow for the subdivision of land with less than the requisite amount of frontage on the lot. That being said, I want you to recognize that this is not a subdivision in the traditional sense, but rather is a boundary line adjustment between two abutting lots. So, there are two tracts of land that are legal entities as we speak. And at the end of our hopeful journey through this as well as the planning board, there will also be two lots at the end. Both of these lots are already developed and there will be no new lots for development as a result of what we are proposing. And that being said, I'll give you a quick explanation. You have the plan in front of you there, I see. This parcel A is identified on the lower portion of your plan and it is identified as 15.3 acres of land and it's labeled "To be transferred to 208/241-1." That's the existing abutting lot which has frontage on White Oaks Road and is abutting parcel A on two sides. The north side is an existing 50-foot wide corridor of land presently owned by the Ferraros property and is part of that 15 acres proposed to transfer. And you will see that that 50-foot wide right-of-way flares out as it intersects White Oaks Road. And for all intensive purposes, there's 100 feet of road frontage there with those two flares and the 50-foot wide throat. The remaining lot is identified on the plan as final lot map number 202, street 241, lot number two, with a resulting acreage of 18.6 acres of land. And here again, we see that there is a corridor of land owned by the Ferraros that extends between lots number 241-1 and 241-3 out to and intersecting with White Oaks Road. And that location at White Oaks Road is the resulting frontage of, again, approximately 100 feet. The application identifies it as 103.47 if you add up all the math there. So, that's the resultant frontage from this proposal and that's less than is required for the creation of a lot per the subdivision regulations in the zoning ordinance. Hence, we're here in front of you to seek a variance to that requirement and that requirement alone. If... I'll be happy to slow down or go or answer your questions.
I know some of this of what you're saying, but I don't know all of what you said and...
Let me try it. I'll try it one more time because I'm trying to keep it organized.
Let me ask a few questions to get my bearings on what you're saying. The dotted lines is White Oaks Road?
No, sir.
Is that what I'm understanding?
No, sir. On the right-hand side of the plan, you'll see in large text the word "White Oaks Road."
Okay, I got that now.
And now that's the main highway. And there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 lots basically shown fronting on White Oaks Road. The one at the lower corner, closest to you on the bottom of the plan, is the receiving lot for what we're proposing as to cut away from the Ferraro's property. And as you can see, that is adjacent to a 50-foot wide corridor that is part of the Ferraro land.
So everything that's behind here is all Ferraro?
Yes, the two corridors.
Yep, the two corridors, because this is one lot here. Pretend that dash line is a solid line and this is one lot. So what they have originally is two lots or one large lot that had two 50-foot access points.
Correct.
So what they're going to do is subdivide this large tract here. This large tract is going to be added to this. So this 50-foot area here is going to be added to the frontage of this lot. This lot will then have this corridor remaining and that will be his...
So this and this were added together?
This one is not. This one is separate.
So where does this number two boundary line, is this black line?
Is this black line right here, yep.
All right, so...
And this is going to be added, this little arrow thingies. This lot with this corridor is going to be added to this lot here.
And this dotted line is...
That's a road end. That looks like probably a logging road or an access road in.
It is correct, yes.
That's what that dotted line represents. It's a road that's already there and it could very well be an old logging road or an old woods road, old farm road.
But at least...
We're going to add all this property back here, it says parcel A.
To here.
To the existing 208-241-1.
And then the rest of it, the balance of it to the north, is going to be added, is going to create its own...
That'll be the remainder lot?
It's the remaining lot. It's the leftover of the large tract that had originally had the two access points. And that upper corridor is going to be the access point for 202-241-2. So what we're doing is creating two lots. This one's going to get an extra 15, well, 15 acres and then this one will be a new separate lot.
And this one's going to get tied into who?
This one is going to create...
Its own lot?
It's going to be its own lot, am I...
No, no. At present, there are two lots out there and one of them, the Ferraro lot, with its two corridors extending out to White Oaks Road, is 33 acres in size.
Well, that's what, so we're saying the same thing.
So that's one lot.
We're saying the same thing though, but after the subdivision, they'll...
Boundary line adjustment, it would be clearer, I think.
Boundary line adjustment. After that adjustment, there will be two...
There are two lots now?
There are two lots now.
There will be two lots at the end, no new lots are being created.
The original, the original two are 241-1.
Correct.
And 241-2.
Correct.
And we're still going to have 241-1 and 241-2.
Correct.
Just different sizes.
Correct.
Okay.
So the road frontage for 241 Lot 2 is where?
Up here. That would be that upper corridor.
The northerly corridor, correct.
Right, the corridor.
Okay.
And that's where the driveway access has been and is at present. That's a good and proper driveway.
This is how...
That southern, the southern one?
No, the northern one.
The northern one, I understand that.
The southern one's kind of like a woods road.
Woods trail.
Yeah, it's not, it's not for the faint of heart.
So all this is road frontage?
All that is roadway. All that is, it's not road frontage.
It's reversible.
It's small, there's about 100, there's a small section in here. It's road frontage. It's going to be added to the existing frontage of this lot.
What's the difference between them?
This is also road frontage.
So, does the upper road frontage currently meet code?
Between, currently, the large lot and the two spokes that go out to White Oaks constitute the road frontage because each one of those spokes has slightly over 100 feet of frontage. When you add them together, they have the required 200-plus feet of road frontage. So the request here is, the variance is for the upper part of the land because they're moving some of the land away and part of its frontage, the lower spoke. This is in effect creating a non-conforming lot because now they're only going to have 103 feet of frontage where they need 200.
But the spoke doesn't, and why doesn't the spoke itself constitute road frontage if it's...
It does, it does now.
All this is road frontage?
No.
No.
No, 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 no.
Just the spoke.
Just this.
But that's going to be a road.
No, I mean it is.
It is or it isn't?
It is not. It is private land and it could become a road if it were developed, if a condominium were developed, if lots were created. That's what it could be, but it is not as we speak. It is not.
It's not really, it's not really a road. And the main issue would be, this one would have sufficient road frontage. The main issue is that this upper lot, since it's only getting the 100 feet, needs a variance for 100 feet where road frontage is required for 200 in this zone.
And this one up here? And is that required down here?
It would be down here as well, but this one is going to have it.
It already has frontage. There's already a lot there.
Yep.
It already has an entrance, it already has frontage.
Because of 241-1 frontage there.
Right.
Yep.
It should be noted that the property at present, as was noted, has approximately 205 feet of frontage. We'll round it off, okay? And that in and of itself is non-conforming. The zone requires 250, so we're not making anything new, exciting. We're not making anything essentially worse. We're just, we need to do this to cover the requirements to go before the planning board. The planning board cannot authorize anything except 250 feet, period, if I was to modify the Ferraro lot. And it is our argument that I'm about to present to you that the circumstances in this case are such that it is hopefully deserving of your approval. And I'll get to those things in a moment, but right now, I wanted you to understand what we're trying to accomplish, okay? Because it, sometimes it can be a little confusing as demonstrated here tonight, you know? It can be confusing, but it's a very straightforward and simple transfer or jockeying, as it were, of the existing property line between two existing lots. Hence, we call this a boundary line adjustment, not a subdivision, yet it falls under the subdivision statute.
And the actual adjusted boundary line is going to be this 300.5 feet on these two pins on the west side of 241-1?
The 300.5 is the line that's being obliterated, absorbed, taken out?
So the most non-conforming part about this is going to be on 202-241-2 with the remaining access to that.
That's correct.
In half of what it is.
That's correct. That's the only issue before us this evening is to allow this boundary line adjustment and to reduce the existing frontage, which is in two parts, down to the one part. That's it in a nutshell. So, that having been said, if there's anybody else who needs further explanation, I'll be happy to do that prior to going forward with trying to answer the variance questions. Otherwise, not hearing any, I'm going to...
If you could help me out for just a moment here. What if you have a lot, you know, that's landlocked off of the, you know, way back? Can't you access it with just the 50-foot frontage to access your lot? I mean, is it... Why do you need 200 feet? My question.
That's what the...
That's the zoning ordinance because there's no water or sewer there. You need 250 feet of frontage. That's just how we've parceled out the various parts of the city.
Like, but if you have a lot that's buried like this one?
So, I think the question you're asking me is, if you have this lot here, if, and no one is proposing this.
Right.
But if you wanted to subdivide out here, how do you do that? And the answer is, you take that 50-foot corridor and make it a street.
Right.
And then you extend the street into the lot and then that street frontage...
Would become your frontage.
Become your street frontage of the new lots that you created. That's not what's being proposed or requested.
But it's possible in the future.
It is possible in the future, yes.
Interesting. Thank you for teaching.
So then that 50-foot corridor, or, because that's now going to be 50-foot this entrance here?
Yeah.
It could be just another road?
It could be, but it's a driveway now and the proposal before you is that it would remain a driveway for the one house.
If this road is going to be the frontage of something, would it meet the criteria for a road to be acceptable?
Yes. A 50-foot right-of-way is the minimum...
For something to maintain something down?
Yep, is the minimum for a, for a street to be constructed on. I...
And plowed and safety and everything, it would meet the criteria for a...
But again, I want to stress, no one's proposing a road or at this time.
I understand, today.
But in the future, if somebody wanted to do something back there, yes.
But it doesn't make sense to do something today that's going to...
We're not, we're not creating a future problem.
An issue tomorrow.
No, no.
Okay. That's what I wanted to make sure.
In furtherance of your concern, I have spoke with the abutter who is purchasing and acquiring parcel A this evening and I have been informed of his purpose of mind. His purpose of mind is to prevent development, his purpose is to provide protection and green space around his own home. And I will further say that to do this, dividing the 33 acres and taking away one of the 50-foot wide accessways, is to destroy any reasonable hope for future development because the Ferraros also do not wish to develop this property into a condominium or lots or space shuttle launch site, nothing. They don't want to do that. So, we're here before you tonight to seek that requisite, required variance which is really going to protect open space here in the city. It really is because it makes it much more difficult with only the one access point to do a development. And no one in this audience, the owners, either owner wants to see development at this time or in the future. I mean, these owners don't. These owners don't want to see it. So, that being said, I think we're all in good understanding of what we're going to try to accomplish. And as read into the record, this variance is a request from Article 6, Table 2, Section 235-34, the zoning ordinance, to permit the transfer of land to an abutting lot by boundary line adjustment, leaving 103.47 feet of frontage along White Oaks Road for the remaining parcel, that being insufficient in accordance with the current zoning ordinance. That's what we're requesting. The granting of this variance would not be contrary to the public interest because no additional impact for municipal services will be required by this proposal. The remaining 103.47 feet of road frontage is the current access to the lot, the Ferraro lot, from White Oaks Road. And there will be no change in, in the, I hesitate because the Ferraro home has burnt down.
Right.
It is to be rebuilt, so that's, I hesitate to say no change because they're going to put the home back. That's the plan. All right. If the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because the request to allow the single 103.47 foot of frontage along White Oaks Road to remain as the current driveway provides for continued adequate and sufficient access to the property. Granting the variance would do substantial justice because the request allows the landowners to proceed with a proposed boundary line adjustment with an abutting lot with no impact to municipal services or private rights of development. If the variance were granted, the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished because the current frontage access driveway is not changing. No change to the surrounding properties would result by granting of the variance and no physical change to either property save the reconstruction of the one home that used to be the Ferraro's home on Lot Number 2. No fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose for the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property because the purpose of the ordinance is to provide sufficient separation between structures between adjacent lots. This proposal provides for continued and appropriate setbacks between the structures as the building area is the existing building area and is far removed from the lots that are immediately abutting that 50-foot wide right-of-way. The proposal use is a reasonable one because the use is a single-family residential lot and is the allowed use in this zone, so there's nothing unusual about that. So I think those, that covers all the bases and I think that I'm going to stand down and answer any questions that you might have to the best of my ability. And if I can't, again, I say the landowners are here this evening and they can help us where need be. Thank you.
I have a question. Just on this access into Lot 2, where our remaining frontage will be, on the end part of it, there's these two pins on the stone wall. What's the distance in between those?
50 feet.
That's 50 feet, that's what I'm seeing?
Yep.
Between the two pins?
Yes.
So the reason, so the reason it gets...
It's actually a little bit more.
The reason it gets its 100 feet is because of the flare?
Correct. Yeah, the throat, the accessway is a 50-foot wide way.
Any other questions of the applicant at this time?
What's the current frontage of the Rockwood parcel?
I'm not sure. I have the plan. It was a subdivision many years ago. I don't have that right at the top of my...
100.69.
Because it doesn't look like that would be...
It was created at a different time.
Yeah.
You know, you have to ask yourself this question too. How did this lot, the Ferraro lot, get approved?
Oh, I...
No, because it doesn't have a variance.
I'm a title abstracter. I've been doing it for almost 15 years.
See? You and I are thinking along the same lines.
And I was just wondering, because I'm looking at most of these lots thinking that really doesn't look like most of those.
And they're quite varied.
Yeah.
If you look at them, they're very odd.
What's about 125?
So I was going to say, it's not conforming anyway.
I think it was a different, a different ordinance.
This actually brings it...
However, with the addition of the extra 50 feet, they are becoming less non-conforming, so that is not an issue.
That's what I was, that was what I was trying to get at.
That is a non-issue for that property.
Yeah, that's what I, that's one of the...
The only issue before you is the variance for the...
The other one, yeah.
The upper property which is going from 205 to 105.
But to me, that's positive that you're making that lot less non-conforming.
Yep.
But anyway, so that, yes, that's all I was... Okay.
So, currently to make it, let me re-ask this a different way. We take the access point which says it's approximately 103 feet on the, for the Lot 2, and then we take the asset point down at the bottom. Those two added together created the 200-foot requirement, so that's...
We're getting closer to the 250-foot requirement.
So that's...
One of the lots, but that's not the issue.
No, that is not the issue.
We added the two together to make the 250.
200.
200.
To make 200.
Less non-conforming.
My guess, my guess, Steve, and I don't know this for sure, but my guess is that when this was, when the current configuration was done, that the requirement out there was a 200-foot frontage, which they meant at that time.
But as soon as we strip this, we're now going to have a non-conformity at the bottom and a non-conformity at the top. So why doesn't the one at the bottom?
The lot at the bottom is already non-conforming.
Already non-conforming.
We're adding fifty-three feet to its frontage, cause it's absorbing that lower spoke. Therefore, they're becoming less non-conforming, that is not a violation of the zoning ordinance, they do not need any relief to do that.
We're actually adding a hundred and three feet.
Right, a, a hundred and three, sorry, yes, a hundred and three feet.
So they're making that one, they're making this one less non-conforming, which is, it's already non-conforming. I mean, I, I should've done some research, because I can just envision the old plan for this, and I see a strip of lots along the road, and then the back land, and they kept these two corridors to access it.
Oh yeah, that's exactly what it is.
Cause it would've made up the two hundred feet of product.
That's exactly how it came on.
That's all the city would've, back then, would've required them to do.
So we're not creating the non-conformity?
Correct.
Not for the, no, not, definitely.
Only, only for the upper?
Yeah, not for this lot, if the only non-conformity now is for this lot.
I was just, trying to figure out how the lower one-
The lower lot is non-conforming.
Non-conforming, and we don't need a variance.
No.
Because it's already existing.
It's pre-existing non-conforming.
Pre-existing non-conforming, yeah.
Okay.
And they're not asking for anything-
They're not, they're not asking it no smaller, they're going bigger, which is always directionally correct.
Okay. Cool. All right.
Okay.
Any other questions of the applicant at this time? You may have a seat.
Thank you.
If there's no further questions of the applicant at this time, I'm gonna open it up to the public and ask if the, anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Randy Rockwood, I am the person trying to buy the land from the Ferraros. I just wanted to comment, let you guys know, like Brian said, I don't have any plans to do any sort of subdivision in my future, whatever, I honestly just want it for the privacy and the fact that nobody can build next to me. I've had a fifty-foot road next to me before, and when it gets built, it ruins your view, so, trying to prevent that.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, please come forward and introduce yourself for the record. That the record indicate, no one else from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, I bring it back to the board. Any other questions? Any closing comments?
No, sir.
With that, I'm gonna close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion.
I think it's reasonable, I think the use, especially where they're, they intend to not develop them further. And they're, they're doing this adjustment to create more room and more space for each of the lots is a benefit to the area, to help keep more area in, in natural condition. I think that there are sufficient limits in place, um, that would control any, at, at some point, if those owners no longer owned, I think the city has sufficient control over development so that we wouldn't see unreasonable development of these lots, particularly this one with the limited access. I think the city would probably, the planning board would have control, and the planning board can put reasonable regulations on it, if we do approve the variance for this, for the, um, undersized access point. I think the benefit gained by increasing this lot's frontage, the Rockwood lot's frontage, is beneficial as well.
And the point that it is, if at some point in time, it is the size, that a regulation road can be put in, in place.
And if, if they wanted to build, put in a road, and actually may create a road, if for some reason, somewhere in the future, something was developed, and I'm assuming the city would have requirements for a road to be put in, if the city approved it at all. It's, it's a question of whether the city would even permit an access.
I think the recognition on this parcel A also is that it has a distinct amount of wetlands on it.
Yeah, they do, both of them have quite a bit of, the, the A in particular, but, I can't, yeah, I would, I can, it would be difficult to build around all of those wetlands anyway.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I think it's a reasonable use for the land, I think it, uh, provides, uh, what both these people need, it doesn't impact any of the line on the front of White Oaks Road. You already have the pre-existing non-conforming, um, driveway, and I think it'll give the protection for, um, this front lot, this two forty-one, one, what it wants.
Right.
Yeah, I think it also provides some protection for these, all of the lots along there, to keep development back in there to a minimum.
Okay. Anybody like to put that in the form of a motion?
I can do that.
There we go.
Thank you.
And I need this also. Okay, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, we accept this variance for Z O two oh one nine dash zero zero three A, three nine, variance for seven twenty-four White Oaks Road. This, uh, application is to, uh, accept a variance on having insufficient road frontage on, uh, certain on, uh, map two oh two, Street two forty-one, Lot Two. This subdivision is probably in the best interest of this community and for the, or this area and for these people, it certainly seems to be what they're looking for, it does not. Can we accept it as read in? For his, uh-
Yep.
And, uh-
Your motion is to accept, is, as what the applicant stated?
Correct.
Okay. We got a second?
A second that-
Discussion of the motion. Any additions or any things we need to add to this motion that would?
I don't think so.
Okay, there being none, no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. With that, you want these nice pretty prints for the planning board? You want the smaller ones too? All right. See, other business before the board?
I just wanna remind the board that next month, you're also on a Tuesday schedule, cause of the holiday.
Okay, not sure what holiday that is, but President's Day.
So is Tuesdays also six thirty?
Yes.
Cause I was operating under the assumption that when we met on Tuesdays, we, we started at seven. And I don't know why I thought that, but I thought you had a work conflict, but apparently not, must've misheard you.
No.
Mr. Chair, the only thing is, I put the, the, uh, list in front of you, if you can just look at, if there's any corrections, a lot of you emailed me back, so, but just take a quick look, if there's any corrections, just let me know, and I will, uh, update it.
So as I see this, we got three ups for this year. Myself, Gail, and Michael. I'll be, I'll be reminding y'all's, Ewens and myself. Come June.
Yeah, yeah, the admin assistant for the city manager's office will reach out to you when it gets closer and let you know you, your options. You just say we wanna re-up, then you, you know the process, you gotta go and be interviewed, but-
Okay. Any other business before the board? Just, uh, what you missed was the elections. I'm being, uh, re-elected as chair. Yeah, Ori here has been secretary and vice chair.
Okay, as long as you just didn't elect me to anything while I wasn't here. Yeah.
We weren't doing that too.
Don't teach you to come in late.
Well, I was just gonna say, minute I saw you all sitting here, I said I'm gonna be something, I know I am.
That would've been pretty sneaky.
It's been known to happen.
Yeah, no.
I was gonna say, it happens more frequently than you think.
Now, I guess a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Yep, it's done.
I have no idea.
Make it so.
Well-